June 24th. Fourth Friday's Art Walk is this Friday, June 28th, and Downtown Lee Summit from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Art Walk will feature over a dozen artist pop-ups and showcases outside and inside downtown businesses. Enjoy the music in the park at Howard Station Park at 6:30 p.m. with a performance by Main Street Mojo. For more information, go to downtownls.org. Become more involved in your community. The city's Wellness Commission is recruiting members. The Commission advises and recommends to city council plans, programs, and projects that improve the health and well-being of residents. Apply today at cityofls.net. The Legacy Park Amphitheater has two scheduled concerts this upcoming weekend. On Friday night, join artist Julian Vaughn for a night of jazz. And Saturday night, the Red, a Taylor Swift tribute concert, will take place. Sing and dance the night away. Purchase tickets today at rocktheamp.net. And mark your calendars for Legacy Park on July 3rd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Legacy Park. Gates open at 6:00 p.m. and the fireworks show begins at 9:30 p.m. Tune to 94.9 KCMO during the show from music choreographed to the fireworks. Concessions, food trucks, and more will be at the sports venues surrounding Lacy Park before the show. Be sure to arrive early to join in on the fun. Learn more at lsparks.net. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summit Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within the Lee Summit Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or doing reports or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing and as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms to write reports and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5:00, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store when you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days, working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which again is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the kind of sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station. And the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working out of the station that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible. So that way, when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we came and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal, when we run calls and we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. When you see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire, we can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that. Again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine. And what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear.
This will call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, June 27th, 2024. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mark Kitchens. Cherry Frazier. Jake Lovelace.
Present.
Dana Arth.
Present.
Donnie Funk. Terry Traptan.
Present.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Present.
Chip Tuzinski.
Present.
Randy Benbrook.
Thank you. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
Chair, I move for approval of the agenda.
Can we get a roll call vote?
Second.
Oh, can we get a second? Now a vote.
Cherry Frazier.
Yes, approved.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public comments. Do we have any pertaining to the Planning Commission, the general business of the Planning Commission? I see none. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. We've got three items. Application PL 2024-100, Vacation of Easement, and approximately 17-foot-wide by 250-foot-wide long portion, or by 250 feet-long portion of drainage easement. 2214 Southwest Osage Drive, Olson, applicant. Item B, applicant, PL 2024-122, sign application. Trilogy Monument Sign, 800 Northwest Ward Road, North Point Development, applicant. Item C, approval of the May 23rd, 2024 Planning Commission Action Report. Can I get a motion to approve this?
Vice Chair, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a roll call vote?
Cherry Frazier.
Approval.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Terry Traptan.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the public hearing. We have application PL 2024-117, Preliminary Development Plan, Diventures 2951 Northeast Independence Avenue, Diventures, applicant. For all those planning to give testimony or to speak regarding this application, will you please stand up and be sworn in? All right, thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation tonight?
Very short one.
Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Brandon Smith. I'm with H Design Group. We're an architectural firm in Springfield, Missouri, and our address is 5039 South National Avenue, Springfield, Missouri, 65810.
Thank you.
I'll try to keep this short. We've actually been through this process for the PDP before with Diventures. Last year, we've had a VE process since then. So primarily, that's what we would like to look at in the presentation here. I think there's just two things we really wanted to discuss with you guys. The first is signage, and of course, we reviewed this last time. It was a much similar signage scheme as last time. However, it is a little bit different. So if you guys have any questions about that, I'm happy to discuss it. But if we, the argument we were making is that we are keeping it under the 10% requirements in the UDO. And then, of course, the other one is materiality. With the value engineering, we have switched to a metal building. And as you know, metal buildings come with a set of things that make them metal buildings. That said, while we are using a lot of metal panel now, we are doing a lot of things to try to make this a more friendly, more commercial building and not an industrial eyesore. The major component of that, and I have a cut sheet in here if you guys would like to take a look at that, is the metal panel will be a concealed fastener corrugated metal panel. So it won't be your exposed fastener ribbed panel that you would associate with your more industrial style of a metal building. These are some more up-to-date renderings. Unfortunately, these don't have the site on it, but you can see how that metal panel will look. We're also adding lots of color and canopies and a little bit of masonry. And then we've got some older renderings in here, too, of some, of the building with the site around it. We do have a mechanical screening that we will, we will use, same as the last PDP. It will be a composite material screening that, that equipment in. And then here's the panel. So you can see on the top right there, the profile of that, they interlock, and you don't see any of the fasteners. I think that's it for me. I've got a couple of people with me. I've got John Gray with Diventures and Luke Moore with our civil team, and they can answer any questions about those areas. Do you guys have any questions for me?
We're going to let the city planner give his presentation or her presentation, his, and then we will probably have questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Ian Trefferan, planner. Before I begin, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 14.
Exhibits 1 through 14 noted and entered into the record.
Thank you. So good evening. This evening, I'll be presenting application PL 2024-117, a revised preliminary development plan for Diventures. The applicant previously came before you in 2022 with a preliminary development plan and received approval with a couple of conditions, which we'll get into later. But today, they are requesting approval of an amended PDP to accommodate some substantial architectural changes to the elevations for an indoor diving facility. The subject property is located at 2951 Northeast Independence Avenue. It's Zone CP2, planned community commercial, and adjacent land uses include a sea store, gas station to the west, medical office, and the K1 indoor go-kart track to the south, the I-470 highway to the east, and vacant lots to the north across Struther. Comparing the previously approved building to the current one, there is a reduction in building height, floor area ratio, building size, and impervious area with this one compared to the last. And parking is remaining the same at 73 stall. So overall, this is a smaller building with less impact to the site. With respect to the application itself, a neighborhood information meeting was held on May 22nd. No residents attended that meeting, and staff has not received any comments or concerns from the public since then. And as the presenter before me alluded to, there are a few modifications being requested here, specifically the reduction of parking setback along the eastern property line, the use of architectural materials, which is more of a conditional material rather than modification, and I apologize for that, and an increase in the attached wall sign count in the previous application. And we'll get into all these modifications and conditional materials later in the presentation. Moving over to the elevations, here are the north and south elevations, and the top and bottom respectively. The materials included are metal paneling systems, concrete masonry, glass. Those are the, not concrete masonry, sorry, bricks and glass. And the eastern and western elevations on the top and bottom respectively. So moving into the first modification, a reduced parking setback is requested along the eastern property line. The UDO requires 20-foot separation between the parking lot and right-of-way. They are proposing 13 feet. This was a modification that was granted back in 2022 and is kind of moderated by inclusion of landscaping materials and the fact that the right-of-way adjacent to it is 110 feet deep. So with that, staff is supportive of this modification, and all of them for that matter, but specifically. With respect to the conditional materials, the applicant is requesting architectural metal, which is composed of about 74%, or the facade as a whole is about 74% architectural metal, with the remaining 26% being masonry glass, mold masonry and glass. And then lastly, the sign package is, the applicant is requesting nine attached wall signs. The, this is an increase of one wall sign from the previously approved PDP. Specifically, that is the addition of a 76-square-foot wall sign on the western elevation, and then a reduction in other signs, like a reduction in size of some of the other signs. All in all, while this is an increase in total sign count, the individual facades all meet the 10% UDO requirement. So each of the facades individually only have between about 3.9 and 5.3% coverage, depending on which facade you're looking at. So with that, staff is also supportive of this, since it does meet the total assigned area requirement set forth in the UDO. And this is the north and south, and the east and west elevations. With the previously approved project in 2022, there were two conditions attached to it, one being landscaping along the eastern property line and also landscaping around the trash enclosure located on the western part of the site. The applicant has submitted designs with these landscaping components included in it. So staff is not looking to include that condition of approval with this application, since it was already provided for. And then kind of wrap it all up. This project does meet the Ignite Comprehensive Plan. This property is designated for commercial, sorry, commercial use in the future land use plan. So with that and with all the conversation before, staff is supportive of this project and recommends approval. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. All right, so I guess we will start with any questions from the Commission, and I'll start with you.
I have no additional questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Chair, or Vice Chair. I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the previous drawing. I'm looking actually at the staff letter. And I see that you did put the previous rendering and the current rendering. It's just for me to understand. So are we, are we increasing the overall percentage of the metal panel for VE? So I guess it's a question between staff and applicant here, because the previous product was a wood look aluminum. So it's not necessarily a different type, it's just a different aesthetic? I just kind of want to know the distinction.
That might be a good question, with respect to the material itself, or?
It's kind of a broad question. It's just, again, for me to understand, yeah. So there's 74% metal panel on the proposed. I'm curious what it was before, and knowing that the change in general was because of the VE wood look aluminum metal panel.
I do not have that number specifically on hand, but I can definitely look that up and get it to you unless...
I'm happy to explain that one.
Yeah, please.
So within the previous application, we were looking at using a wood look metal panel as an accent on the building. However, that was a kind of separate item in this compared to this revision. The value engineering, just to kind of explain the construction style a little bit, before it was structural steel with cold-form steel stud framing. We were using lap siding and brick, and that works with that style of construction, metal buildings. Part of what makes them more affordable is the way that the structure, the pearlins work, and the metal panels span a longer distance as opposed to having studs and sheathing and all that stuff. So the metal panel is part of the construction style. So the whole building is now, as opposed to lap siding before.
That helps.
Does that make sense? Okay, perfect.
That's all.
Mr. Traptan.
Thank you, Vice Chair. My question's for the applicant, Mr. Monroe, is that it? Or? Yeah. Whoever's, I forgot your name, sorry. The architect is really who I want to talk to, sorry. Mr. Smith, sorry.
Sir.
I noticed there's a slight difference, deviation from the actual preliminary development plan and the elevations. It looks like you guys made some changes. I think you referenced that, but he didn't specifically talk about it.
The original submission and what we're showing today, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, so we added some windows and moved some signage around. That's generally...
It looked like one of the doors was moved on the front to the side, which probably makes more sense. I just want to, I'm sure you guys will get it all worked out as you move it forward. It's not really that big of a deal. I just did notice, if you look at the, and it's not a big deal, but...
They'll wait for me to get back so we can...
The elevations and the PDP, there was a door on the front, and then it got moved to the side, but it doesn't match.
Oh, yes. So we did have a door right here that is no longer there.
I mean, I think it's probably, it looks better, and that's fine. I just, they don't match. And so as you move forward, I think you probably would want to, like, make all those details match. I'm sure the city will help you work through all that, but... So, okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't dreaming, so thank you.
No, I apologize. We had some changes midway through there. But we will get that corrected on stuff moving forward.
All right, great, thank you.
Mr. Frazier.
I just want to make sure I understand the, the picture that's here currently, and I apologize, it was in here on 2022. This is the side, this is the east-facing or the west-facing side of the building? With the circular?
Sorry, that was east and west. So the ones with the bubble windows was the eastern facade.
Okay, so the parking, the one that's facing the parking lot is with the fish? Parking lot's off of Independence, correct?
So, yes, it is. So looking at this site, west would be on the left, south would be on the bottom. So there's two sides that face a parking lot. Specifically, if we're looking at the facades, it would be the bottom one here and then the top one here.
Okay.
Or... Yeah. Bottom. Okay, bottom.
Okay, I was just curious as to the, the fish and the, you know, did that face, you know, a highly, you know, a high-traffic area, you know, Independence or the side? And it sounds like it's on the side, the Struther side, if you would.
Yeah, this would be on the north side, so facing Struther.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we are done with questions, okay? Any comments? I'm going to start with you, Sherry. Oh.
Okay, so I'm looking at the renderings on the application on the portal. So what we're seeing elevation is what we're discussing and talking about, right? Not what's in our application here?
Yeah, the renderings are not what's being approved. It's a representation of it, so there might be some differences. But the elevations that are presented in the presentation are what you're actually approving or recommending for, yeah.
I guess that goes, if we're approving the elevations and the signage, I mean, on page two of the elevations, there's clearly a misrepresentation of where the door is. And so I don't know if we just want to make note of that. Are you guys going to fix it and as you move forward? I mean, I know the door is not there, but on this page two, it is in the front. And it's moved in the images to the side, so they don't match. So I don't know, I don't know what that means for you and if that's important. It is a pretty big detail, though.
Shannon McGuire, Planning Manager. So something like a specific door location is something that we would review on a final development plan. It's not a substantial change, so if those doors switch between now and then, it's not a huge change that would trigger a new PDP approval. So some of those stuff can kind of shift back and forth a little bit. Does that address your concern, or?
Yeah, I figured that's probably what's the case, but then I was hearing something else.
All right, if we have no more questions, we will close public hearing and move on to comments from the Commission, starting with Commissioner Frazier. No further comments. Thank you.
The only comment I would make is probably for, I guess, the applicant and for staff, just at council, it might be prudent to have a before and after, after we go through and tie all this stuff out, just eliminate a handful of questions. But otherwise, thanks for being patient and working to get this project in.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm actually glad this project's continuing to move forward. I like the look, the new look. I know there was some trepidation about the fish and people on the building, but I actually like the fish and the people on the building. So I look forward to this being built over there. I think it'll be a great addition to the community. Thank you.
I want to echo what Commissioner Lovelace had mentioned. The before and after in general is always really nice, and also making sure that whatever we see in the application matches what we see. But I want to thank the applicant for keeping the landscape around the enclosure. I don't want to look at it like the enclosure, so that's really appreciative. Thank you.
Vice Chairman, I would just like to echo what Commissioner Traptan said. Thank you very much for bringing this project forward. I don't think we have anything like this in the city, and it's exciting to have something here. I wish I would have asked this during the question, but I wish I knew how deep your pool was, because that would be kind of cool to figure out how deep you're going to be learning how to scuba. But overall, thank you for coming, and I appreciate it and look forward for this getting built. Thanks.
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Traptan. The fact you passed his approval, since he is the sign guru on the Commission... The fact you passed his approval, since he is the sign guru on the commission, is, says a lot, but I really like the new look, too. So if everybody's done commenting, we will take a vote. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we need to, I need to have a motion from, goodness gracious.
Right, I'll try on this one. I'd like to make a motion to, like to, hold on a second. All right, I move to approve application, oh, sorry, wrong one.
You're going to have to make a motion to recommend approval.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of application number PL 2024-117, Preliminary Development Plan, Diventures, 2951 Northeast Independence Avenue, Diventures applicant.
Get a second. All right, can we get a roll call vote?
Cherry Frazier.
Yes.
Jake Lovelace.
Yes.
Dana Arth.
Yes.
Terry Trafton.
Yes.
Tanya Johnna Ford.
Yes.
Chip Tuzinski.
Yes.
All right, so this application has passed the, or passed a recommendation, and we'll move on to city council. So with that, I guess we're at the roundtable part of the meeting. Does anybody have anything? No? All right, do you guys have anything for roundtable? All right, I guess then I'm going to adjourn the meeting.